Good evening, and welcome to the February 21st meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Panaleon.
Here.
Alderman Marsh.
Here.
Alderman Schonheider.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Edelman.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Birdy. Will you please join me in a pledge allegiance?
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening is to conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed plan of operation and governance for the city's residential and small commercial retail electricity aggregation program. This is somewhat of a formality, but I need a motion to open the hearing. All in favor?
Second.
Oh, second. I'll never quit doing that, so... The hearing is open. I'm asking the public if there's anyone here for any comment on the electricity aggregation. Yes, sir. If you come on up and state your name and your address for the record, I appreciate that.
Paul Hammond, 511 Beverly, 53-year resident of Lake Forest, 30 years electrical engineer. I'm going to vote for the aggregation program, but Commonwealth Edison just recently raised our rates. I believe that the aggregation program is a make-work program for lawyers and MBAs. They raise our rates, then give us back a rebate. The program is not creating any new generating facilities. There is no payback for a smart grid program. Your meter at home costs about $25. A smart meter costs about $200. $200 times 4 million customers means about $800 million. A few years back, Exelon paid only $2 billion for eight nuclear reactors, so we could have had three nuclear reactors for what we're paying for a smart meter program with no new generating capacity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on electrical aggregation? Yes, sir?
My name is Bob Hanson. I live at 88 Marion Avenue, Lake Forest. My only question is pertaining to ComEd. Should we go with this referendum question where we, for all intents, buy electricity from somebody else, but use ComEd lines? What kind of guarantee do we have that we would get service from ComEd if the line went down? We know that their equipment is outdated, and they haven't done a tremendous job on their own of keeping it up to date. If somebody else is serving us with electricity at a cheaper rate on their lines, what kind of service do we get, and what kind of guarantee do we have of getting that service?
I'll just give you a real quick answer, and I'll let the city attorney jump in if he wants to expand on it, but simply that we buy electricity from whatever other provider wants to provide it, but ComEd still has the obligation to service as a service provider to provide that service through the main electrical grid, power lines, et cetera. Vic, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that the only thing that we're presented with is the opportunity to have somebody else be the ultimate supplier, but ComEd is even going to have an obligation to step in if, for whatever reason, that supplier's unable to provide. ComEd is going to be the provider of the electricity. At the end of the day, they're going to be the servicer, and they're going to be the ones that distribute it and are responsible for their maintenance. As to how to ensure that they do their job, that's something that the Illinois Commerce Commission actually has jurisdiction over, as well as the General Assembly with oversight.
Any other public comment? Yes, sir?
Skip Thompson on Arcady Drive here in Lake Forest. And again, maybe you gentlemen can answer this question, and maybe it should just be for others. Why would anybody vote not to do this if it's going to save us money? I just thought I'd ask the question on behalf of a lot of people, because that's what my question is. Why wouldn't we vote for it?
That's a very good question. I don't know why you wouldn't unless you maybe did not completely understand the mechanism, how it works, but the bottom line is certainly economics. I mean, if we can do this and save money for all the residents, which it should, and it shall, then I think it's a no-brainer, frankly, but unless, you know, I can't answer that question other than that.
Mr. Mayor, if I might offer, the question itself with the double negative certainly is reason to confuse.
A lawyer must have written that.
That was the General Assembly. I don't know who wrote it. But if anybody is confused, that would be, I think, the main thing. A yes vote allows the city to move forward to present a program with cheaper electrical service or electrical supply rates. A no vote would not allow the city to do that, even though the language has double negatives and might be confusing upon reading it. That's the upshot of it.
Right. So a vote yes is a positive, frankly. Yes, sir. Do you have another public comment?
My name is Ron Swanson on Blackthorne Lane. In response to the last comment about why would anyone vote against it, my question is, as I've always learned, when something's too good to be true, it frequently is. How can a third-party provider sell electricity at 30% less than ComEd would have access to? I mean, this sounds like a situation that I've seen in finance in my career, where a good deal frequently has risks that are either not apparent or risks that haven't been fully disclosed. What are the risks? And how do these people obtain electricity at 30% less than ComEd? One of the write-ups on the Internet said these were generators of electricity. Are these generators, or are these middlemen? And do you have names of some of the companies that are involved in this marketing of electricity? So my question is, 30% savings seems to me too good a deal, and there have to be some hidden risks or some trade-offs here. My last question, one of the comments on the referendum Q and A said that customers could opt out at any time. If I commit to use the aggregated electricity, and six months later I find it's more expensive than ComEd's, can I opt out at any time during this one, two, or three-year contract period? So several questions, and what are the risks that haven't been disclosed here?
Let's take the first question, I guess. Bob or Vic, I guess, would be the two that I'd defer to.
I'd defer to Vic. I'll be glad to answer some.
I think that a lot of it has to do with the volatility of the market, and with ComEd, they will purchase for themselves at what price they choose to and then pass it on to the consumers. That's also filtered through their tariffs with the Illinois Commerce Commission. ComEd is, at times, one of the suppliers of the electricity through the aggregation process. It's always a bidded process, and it's, again, part of the challenge is the aggregation, I'm sorry, the volatility of the market. I believe it was, was it our last meeting? Or we had a recent meeting where the non-franchise electrical service for the city was bid out and saw substantial savings from what ComEd offers, and it's perhaps more a question of how the ComEd rate structure is for its general servicing than it is for the purchase of the gross power that is available through the aggregation. As far as the risks, there is the ability to opt out. There are windows for doing that, and there may be a paperwork charge, depending on if you're doing it within one of the permitted windows or not. I believe the maximum charge on the paperwork is $25.
$25.
$25. So it's not cost-free if you decide midstream, not during one of the window periods, to opt out, but it's also a relatively modest amount of money to do so. I don't recall the other question, but I thought you had a third.
Who are these people? On the website, it said that they were generators of electricity. Are they all generating their own, or are they new?
No, they have to be certified by the Illinois Power Agency to participate, and then the city and other municipalities have established criteria in what they're trying to do as a consortium in selecting the providers, the wholesale providers. But ultimately, they don't need to be generating the first electron. They can simply be an authorized purchaser of wholesale electricity that can then sell it to the various municipalities. Do you have any more information?
The only other comment that I would probably add is many residents might have already seen some letters from Integris or maybe Direct Energy that have contacted you already to see if you would want to aggregate, or see if you'd want to swap to their electricity. And it is these companies that, as well, can participate in the aggregation bidding process.
I'm sorry. If you have a question, please come up to the podium.
I'm Debbie Kittle, Oakwood Avenue, Lake Forest. I have, I own a green and eco-friendly business, and I've been courted by Veridian, North American Power, to name a few, to sell green energy to my friends, my family, my colleagues, because I have a green business, and it's wind and solar. How are you choosing what provider to go with, and is it wind power, is it solar power? Is there clean energy involved in this? And, you know, what research has been done as to which provider to go with? I'd be happy to answer that. The city, as the city attorney mentioned, we are part of a consortium, and the consortium is a group of seven municipalities in addition to Lake Forest. So Highland Park, Lake Bluff, Glenco, Deerfield, to name a few. And essentially, the committee has gotten together to see if we could aggregate a better electricity rate for all of the municipalities. Now, specifically with respect to the green energy, there is a component in the RFP that was released yesterday, I believe, on behalf of consortium to be bid on. So if you want to participate, you can go to the city's website and put in a proposal. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Let me offer a little more, a little different take, as well, is that for the, what I'll call the green energy aspect of it, most of that's done through credits. The energy is purchased in bulk from a variety of sources, but there are credits that are awarded for green energy producers, and they are at different prices. They are based on the market. And in opting for a percentage of green energy, what in fact you're doing is purchasing a quantum of credits that will essentially allow for that energy to be purchased on the same footing, for all practical purposes, on an economic basis, as power that might be generated from a more traditional energy generating plant. So it's not so much that you're going to get the electrons from wind power, or you're going to get the electrons from solar power, or from a coal generating plant. It's that there will be credits provided, and that's what actually helps subsidize the nascent industries of the more green power sources. And that's just the way the market has been developed in order to bring those newer industries along, to encourage the green power.
Any other questions, comments from the public? Yes, sir?
I'm Tom Boydin, 104 East Westley in Lake Forest. The bill that I get from ComEd has three components: electricity, supply services, delivery services, and taxes and other. The first of these, the electricity supply services, in turn has three components. The first is electricity supply charge. Is that what we're talking about here, that we could get a 30% savings on, or is it the entire bill? It turns out that the, on my bill, the electricity supply charge is a little over half of the total bill.
Do you want to clarify that, Karina or Vic?
It is the electrically supplied, so it's roughly, as far as your overall bill, the impact is going to be perhaps in the 15% range if it's a 30% savings on the electricity through aggregation.
Good. One further question. Our house is all-electric. We have no gas or oil heat. It's all-electric. And as a result, we get a break from Commonwealth Edison on our rate, and it turns out it looks about 38% savings over what a normal rate would be. So it's a question in my mind whether the 38% will apply to the new supply rate or whether I'm faced with a choice between a 38% that I have currently and a potential 30% if I join the consortium.
One of the reasons that the program is set up as an opt-out, if this happens, is for special circumstances. You may fall within one of those special circumstances. If the referendum is approved, the plan of governance will be approved as well, will be considered by the council for approval. If that is adopted, there will be a number of steps taken to notify you of your opportunities to opt out, and it's during that period that you might want to investigate with a little greater care as to how the numbers will apply to your circumstances. If it's not to your advantage, I think you'd be looking to opt out of the aggregation program.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Yes, sir?
Dan Seebald, 560 Ivy Court. I'm sorry for coming a little late, and if I ask something that's repeating, feel free to go on. One of the main questions I have is why this is necessary. I see that it seems to be part of a program at the state level to privatize, but one of the main questions I have is whether this is really going to save money in the long run and whether it is just an added extra level of governance that's needed. For example, I've looked at some literature, and a lot of it seems to be spin. I noticed that the word "hope" of saving money is often in a lot of the descriptions and the flyers we're getting. And there's some evidence that privatization hasn't really saved a whole lot of money as far as the public interest. I have one thing I received in the mail from Direct Energy the other day, and it's 15% savings guaranteed. And if you look at the fine print, that's over three months. So for three months, it says you'll get 15% less than ComEd. So the big question is whether this is a big savings or not. And I think that mainly the point I want to make is what someone alluded to earlier about green energy, and that's more about energy conservation. I think if a local government wants to get involved in bringing down demand and in turn bringing down prices, there's a number of things you can do in terms of efficiency and giving people incentive to insulate homes and that type of thing. I live in an apartment. I know if we're well insulated, I could probably save 15% right there rather than having to go through some kind of privatization scheme. Thanks.
Insofar as the literature and the hope-for language and the like, that's really just a matter that none of this can happen unless the referendum is approved, and no one can predict what the outcome of that vote will be. So there's an inability to say something will happen at that point. Secondly, there needs to be bidding, which, again, cannot occur without the action of the voters to approve the referendum. Once that is done, as far as what savings will occur, that's going to be a market-based decision. It is expected that if the bids come in, and yes, I did use the same kind of "it is expected" language intentionally, it is expected if the bids come in favorably, then in fact a contract will be entered into, and during the time of that contract, those savings will be realized. It is further expected that if the bids come in unfavorably, then there won't be a contract entered into, and there won't be anything to opt out of. Again, all of it is a matter of what the market does bear. The underlying thought of this is really just a matter of what one or two consumers might be able to pick up. When there's an economy of scale, there might be a greater savings, and the way to effect that economy of scale is through aggregation. The role of the city is not to do anything with respect to the individual homeowners. It's really to be dealing with the providers of the electricity and bringing that larger bundle of customers there to effect the economy of scale and therefore effect the hoped-for lower price.
Any other questions, comments from the public on electrical aggregation? Hearing none. And a couple of things, I guess Alderman Marsh made a very good comment to me a minute ago that, Karina, it may make sense. I know you have stuff on the website, but maybe possibly some of these questions as well tonight could be put on to the website with the answers so the rest of the public could get answers to those very good questions that we heard this evening.
Well, yeah.
Thank you. And here we know other comments from the public. I'd ask for a motion to close this hearing.
Some move.
All in favor?
All right.
Second.
You got it, you get it. I don't think I'll ever get past it.
I'll move.
Good job.
Twelve seconds.
The hearing is closed. The next item on the agenda this evening is reports to city officers.
You could pick whoever you want.
Whatever's in there, I have no idea what happened.
You know, there's a Northwestern basketball game on tonight, and if they could beat Michigan, it'd be a heck of a game. They might make it to the first time to make it to the tournament, but anyway.
If you can't get the versions of the seconds right, we'll never get out of here.
We'll get there. Reports of city officers. The first one being comments by mayor. I just want to say, first of all, that on behalf of the city, we apologize for the canceling of our strategic planning that was supposed to be scheduled a couple of weeks ago. We had an unfortunate weather event. We had a little bit of a snowstorm that somewhat materialized, but there was a decision made at City Hall that afternoon that, given that a lot of the staff would not be able to attend, we have rescheduled that strategic planning, and that event will be rescheduled for the weekend of May 4th and 5th. That concludes my comments by mayor. The next one is comments by city manager. I know Bob is not here, but Karina?
No comments this evening.
No comments. That's easy. Comments by council members?
One quick one.
Sorry. I was going to say, well, on the agenda is the public work, so I'll get that after Alderman Moore's done.
Yep, you're coming up.
The gentleman with the all-electric. If we know someone's not going to get a better rate, would it be possible to identify those people and notify them so that the default, if this goes through, so that they're not opting out six months after they've been paying a larger bill? It's a question for later. But if there are people that we know aren't going to get a better deal, is it possible to pre-identify and notify them?
Sounds like risky decision-making for the city.
I'm not sure that...
I'm sure that you would know, would you?
Commonwealth Edison is obligated to provide certain information to the city if we have the referendum approved, but I don't know that Commonwealth Edison has perfect information as to how individual homes are set up. So that's something that we may want to alert people to, that if that's your situation, you might want to give special attention to that.
You get this 38 and 30 question, and they don't translate?
Yeah, but I'm not sure that the city would have any particular means of being able to identify those homes that have, you know, their systems arranged in that manner.
At the risk of stepping out a bit here, going way back into ancient history, Commonwealth Edison used to grant special rates to construction that was all-electric as a means, I believe, to help pay off the cost of the nuclear power plants that they built in the '60s and the '70s. And there are, and those rates, they would know who those people are that have those rates.
We can certainly inquire as to whether they can identify any class of users like that, and if they can, that might provide us a means of at least sending them a particular number.
That's what I'm asking. I don't think the city would have any way of knowing that.
Yeah, no, and we have to get that information.
That's a deal you made with Commonwealth Edison at the time. That's it.
Good.
On the agenda is one item that we had an opportunity to speak, have a little discussion about at a public works meeting earlier today, but this would be, at this point, the annual request for city council to waive the bidding process to purchase replacement water plant membrane filters. Mike Thomas did go into some detail on this request earlier today, and I'm stalling for Mike to walk up, but the positive news in this is, as noted on the agenda, there's...
the agenda, there's a bid process that's actually in more than we anticipated on budget. The other positive part is the number of modules we'd be obtaining would be greater than we initially anticipated.
That is correct. The price now, we'll be purchasing these modules directly from Aqua Source in Toulouse, France. Years past, we've purchased them from their vendor in Richmond, Virginia. We were notified January 1st that that relationship no longer existed, and therefore, we purchased direct now from the factory. What that meant is that the cost per module has been reduced by approximately 37 percent. As we discussed at Public Works Committee this evening, one of the things we are going to look into before we order these is the shipping. The quote includes air freight. Simply from a timing standpoint, we want to try and get these modules in before the high pumpage season, typically early June. These modules take four to five months to produce. Our delay in coming to you, as we had to work through our negotiations or discussions with the people in France, it took four years of French, and I swear I couldn't understand a word they were saying. But I, we did our best. So we wanted to bring this to you this evening to get your approval and hopefully place the order as soon as we can, based upon, again, the most efficient way of shipping at the best cost for the city.
The waiving of the bid, is that related to the fact that there's only one supplier?
That is it.
Yes. Just wanted to point that out so that everybody understood.
And pointing out just so, public's aware, three years ago, these modules cost almost $16,000 apiece. For the upcoming bid, they're $8,973, so the prices dropped substantially on these at this point. So again, budget-wise, we had budgeted for 24 modules. Now we're requesting 36 with the possibility of going four more for 40. So we're getting almost twice as many for the same price.
Correct. Yes, in essence, yes. Yes, you are correct.
Mike, I have a question. Does every water system in the country use something like this?
No. We are very, very unique. There are three, actually. There are three plants in the U.S., one in Texas, one in Alabama, and ourselves that use these modules that are produced by Aqua Source. Membrane fibers, membrane modules, there are different sizes. There's different ways to filter the water. But based upon back in 2001, when we were looking at this project, we were very limited in space. So you simply looked at down at the water plant, how much space we had. You then calculated, you knew how much water we had to get out, what our maximum pumpage per day would be, and that dictated the module size that we were going to have down there. These are the largest sizes. These are 18-inch diameter modules. Very common are eight and 10-inch modules, much more common than these. But again, we needed to, we needed to get a good amount of water through that plant in the high peak period. So it dictated the use of these modules.
There's also, there are also some quality benefits, aren't there?
Absolutely. We've said for long, and it's still true to this day, we probably have one of the best water supplies in the U.S., period. Without question in the state, but definitely in the U.S. So the quality of the water is superb. Back in our old water plant where we would filter water and we would then clean the filters, it would take time for that filter media to compress. Now with these filters, you clean the filters, you turn them back online, and you immediately have the quality you have before you clean them. Plus, it takes out significantly higher amounts of bacteria and viruses and all sorts of things.
Are these lasting longer than they were formerly?
They are. One of the things we did is we installed low-lift sidearm pumps, and those pumps are helping us not to have to turn the plant on and off. These membrane modules do not do well when air is introduced to them. The way our low-lift pumps worked in the past is that they'd hit a certain percentage on the pump curve, and if it was either too high or too low, based on the demand, we'd have to shut the plant down. And we'd shut it down for four or five hours. Turn the plant back on, it generated air, and that's really what tore up a lot of these fibers. Well, now with these sidearm pumps that we installed a year ago, we're able to keep that plant running and not turn it off. And when you don't turn it off, you don't generate air. You don't generate air, the modules last longer. So we expect 10 years out of these modules.
Is this part of a phased replacement program?
It is. Yes.
I'll move to waive the bidding process and by 40.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. Looking for entertaining a vote to approve.
A motion to approve.
Yes, sir.
Second?
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novitt.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Panelyan.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy. Our next item on the agenda this evening is an opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Anyone from the public? No. Hearing none. We'll move on to our next item of business as this is items for omnibus vote consideration. I'll read the three items and then entertain motions as well. First being approval of adding additional cab business license. The second is an approval or resolution for city employees to perform work in lieu of surty bond on state right-of-way, including emergency work. And three is approval of the February 6, 2012 City Council meeting minutes. Any question, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve the council agenda.
Second. Have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novitt.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Panelyan.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman. Alderman Palmer, sorry.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy. Our next item this evening on the agenda is ordinances. The first is a consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of adoption of an updated City of Lake Forest official zoning map. This is a first reading and, if desired by the City Council, final approval, presented by Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development. Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor Colley, members of the council. This recommendation, this is forward to unanimous recommendation from the Plan Commission. Periodically, the city re-adopts an official zoning map. Just to be clear, what you're doing tonight is not approving any zone changes. The last official zoning map was approved in 2009, and we've only had one zone change since then. What you're doing tonight is approving incorporation of that zone change onto the map. Normally, we do this every couple of years, just so we have an up-to-date zoning map. The change that was approved in 2009 was the rezoning of Elloa Park from residential R5 to open area. So the new map as presented now incorporates that. We are continuing to work with the forest preserve and Lake Forest Open Lands, not to rezone Elloa Farm. Elloa Farm is on residential property authorized through a special use permit, but the forest preserve property and the open lands property are areas that would be appropriate to rezone to open area, and we hope to accomplish that this year. So if you choose to do so, you do have a unanimous recommendation from the Plan Commission. It would be appropriate to waive first reading of the ordinance and grant final approval.
Any questions for Kathy?
I'll make a motion to update the city's zoning map.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries.
That was a first reading.
That's for first reading. That's correct. I'd entertain a motion for final approval as well. So move. That's a...
Second?
Second. It's a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novitt.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Panelyan.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy. Thanks, Kathy. Our next item on the agenda is a consideration of an ordinance amending the special use permit for Woodlands Academy, the Sacred Heart, to allow expansion of the campus boundaries to incorporate the 23-acre bearer parcel into the Woodlands Academy campus. This is a final approval. This is presented again by Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development. Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This ordinance is back before you for final reading. You granted first reading of this ordinance at your last meeting, and at that time, you directed staff and the city attorney to look at three areas to see if the language could be tightened up. One of those areas was to look at specifying a timeframe within which demolition of Old Main will need to commence. Second, to assure that there is appropriate security provided to the city for that demolition in the event of any unforeseen circumstances. And third is to incorporate a reference to the city's affordable housing plan and affordable housing policy. You do have the ordinance in front of you that shows those language changes. This ordinance has gone through many iterations since the Plan Commission originally saw this ordinance in early December. What this ordinance does, it's really a next step in the process of supporting the ultimate gift of the bearer property to Woodlands Academy. This ordinance amends the special use permit for Woodlands Academy and allows the campus of Woodlands Academy to be expanded to include the 23-acre bearer property. This ordinance does not authorize any new development on the 23-acre site. That would need to come back to the City Council through the Plan Commission as part of a master plan that will ultimately be developed for Woodlands Academy. Again, you do have the ordinance in front of you with language. The legal representation, Debbie Hadad, from representing both the donors and Woodlands Academy, has been very involved with the city attorney in reviewing and crafting these changes. There's been a lot of back and forth. I think there's been an understanding from both the donors and Woodlands that because this is an unusual circumstance, because there is some uncertainty that this ordinance really goes beyond a normal special use permit, which normally authorizes certain uses. It also establishes a number of requirements, and the ordinance as presented tonight is found, was found to be acceptable by both the donors and based on discussions to date with Woodlands Academy. If you have specific questions about the language, I would direct your questions to City Attorney Victor Philippini. Otherwise, it would be appropriate to grant final approval of this ordinance.
Any questions for Kathy? Yes, Mike?
I think you've done a real diligent job.
I know this has been back and forth quite a bit for a number of months, and I know in the past just a few weeks, there's been quite a bit of interaction by certainly the council here to both the city attorney and to Kathy Cerniak, and then back to the petitioner. So I think there's been a very good amount of very positive, I'd guess, interpretation and input into all matters on this. So I think it was, everyone had an opportunity and a chance to add theirs, and I think they did. They did a very good job doing so. Any other?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a point to that. I mean, Kathy mentioned that this really does go above and beyond the typical special use ordinance. And I think I would applaud both Vic and Kathy, as well as the donors and Woodlands, for being able to reach an agreement on what really does give a great deal of protection to the city, but at the same time accomplishes something that we all want to see happen, which is see that property go back to Woodlands. So I mentioned it before in December. I'll say it again. It's a great gift to the city, and I think on behalf of all of us, we want to say thank you.
Any other comments from the council? I would give the public one last opportunity, if you wish, to make any comment before we take our final vote on it, if anyone here from the public wishes to do so. Hearing none, then I'll bring it back to the council, looking for a recommendation for final approval.
I move to grant final approval.
Second?
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novitt.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Panelyan.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy. Our next item on the agenda this evening is another ordinance. It's a consideration of an ordinance regarding the use of wireless telephones and electronic devices while driving. This is a first reading, presented by Joseph Berger, Chief of Police. Joe?
Good evening, Alderman, Mr. Mayor. You have a, some background information in front of you, also three different options that we'll talk about tonight. A little bit about the background. The Legal Committee first discussed this concept back in October 26 of 2011 at their meeting. Following a briefing from Alderman Palmer at the December 5 Committee of the whole meeting on the Legal Committee's discussion and recommendation, the City Council directed us to forward some options at the January 3 City Council meeting. At the January 3 meeting, the consensus was to table the matter until February 6, when the entire council could be present. At the February 6 meeting, staff provided a report indicating the Illinois State Legislature is introducing a bill that would apply restrictions similar to what Lake Forest was contemplating. That bill is still in committee. It hasn't been called for a vote yet. So the three different options that we're considering, or that the City Council should consider, is don't pass a new ordinance and continue to enforce the current laws regarding distracted driving. And what that consists of is no cellphone, no cellphone use unless it's hands-free in school zones and construction zones, and no texting at all. The restrictions are a little bit stiffer for people who have a graduated driver's license, which would be anyone from 16 to 19. The second option would be to adopt an ordinance regarding the use of wireless telephones and electronic devices while driving, which we'll call the hands-free ordinance. And then the third option would be to adopt a distracted driving ordinance, which would cover many things. As we've discussed in the past, it would cover eating, possibly putting on makeup, combing your hair, anything besides driving the car, would be the distracted driving ordinance. But based on the comments from last time, the last meeting, we don't feel the distracted driving ordinance is really a viable alternative at this time. So I think you really have two options, the first one and the second one, and I can answer any questions you may have.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might just supplement the chief's remarks, the General Assembly, actually, or the House today, actually did a vote on a Third Amendment to the pending bill. And if you look at the first of the two alternatives that are presented in your packet, which have four exceptions, they've now managed to get it up to 10. So they have made some further revisions from what we were basing it on, and ours is very comparable to what we have found in the cities of Highland Park and the village of Deerfield. But the General Assembly's consideration of this is now taking on a few new aspects from what those communities had done with their draft and what is reflected in the ordinance in your packet, just to give you some perspective on where things are from the statewide level.
Vic, while you're at it, could you please just expand on, I know you and I spoke, maybe it was a week ago or so, regarding if we passed our own ordinance, a couple of matters in that regard. One being, we could always go back and amend an ordinance if the state passes it to further be consistent with that state law. And two, the benefits of if Lake Forest were to pass its own ordinance in respect to how we would adjudicate that law. we would adjudicate that law.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that whatever the council does tonight, if the General Assembly comes up with, if it's adopted tonight in the fashion that it's presented, and the General Assembly comes up with something different, I think it would at least warrant a further consideration by the council at that time, both from a matter of consistency and from a matter of our authority, because to the extent that the state has a broader set of exceptions for us to not have those exceptions could be problematic from an enforcement perspective. Secondly, we may always want to make sure that we have a local ordinance reflecting that because of two things. First, it won't always be prosecuted through the courts up in Waukegan or wherever else you might have the branch courts. But second, it will allow us to put it through our administrative adjudication process. That is, I think, both a more convenient process for anyone who goes through an enforcement, but also from a revenue perspective, it's more favorable to the city. Any other fines are going to be inuring back to the city as opposed to first going to the payment of the court and having the city just get a portion of that. So there's both a convenience factor and a financial factor to have the local adjudication.
But I have a question. Vic, there's nothing to stop us or prevent us from passing our ordinance after the state makes it a law. I mean, we do that all, we do that all the time, right?
Right. There's nothing that compels us to go forward tonight. Right now, we're operating under the state law, and we can certainly...
Because, then, I'm sorry, then the way I see it, it really does come down to a matter of revenue. I mean, at least it would give us the option, if the state passes the law, of pursuing some of that revenue ourselves, or there may be all sorts of reasons for wanting to prosecute someone under a local ordinance, under a state law, rather than a state law. Again, we do it all the time. But we don't have to pass an ordinance before the state passes a law. We can surely do it after the state passes the law.
To the extent that we have something in our books, we're able to do that as an ordinance violation. If the only basis on which someone is, an enforcement action occurs that's based on state law, we then don't have the ability, if it's a state law violation, to send it through our adjudication process. That's the only distinction. I think that, you know, that whether there are considerations in terms of safety or otherwise, that's a policy call for you all to make. Our ability to send it through the adjudication, though, does require a local ordinance to be the basis for the ticket at the initial instance.
And how much revenue does, do these ordinances generate for other municipalities? Because I have to believe that for some of them, at least, that's a motivating factor to passing the ordinance. And I'm just curious, how much money does Highland Park get?
I don't have any information on that. I don't think that, at least it would not be my recommendation for the council to do this as a revenue bonanza. I don't know that we would likely see that. I only mention it more that I think it is a, it is a minor but genuine advantage if it goes through our adjudication process, just as it's a minor convenience, I believe, for most of our residents.
Just procedural, and this is ridiculous question, but you could go through the local administrative hearing. If you get multiple tickets, do you go to Waukegan, or do you go to Lake Forest and Waukegan? What happens then?
If they're all tickets issued by the city and are ticketed as local ordinance violations, they go through our adjudication process. Our adjudication process does have an appeal right, so if you don't like the outcome at the, you know, from our adjudicator, you can go to the circuit court. But aside from any escalation provision we either have in our ordinance or is meted out by our local adjudicator, there isn't any, any difference from getting one ticket versus 10 tickets.
What is, as you answered, you may have answered it, and it just might not have registered for me. If I'm pulled over, if I'm speeding, and at the same time I get a ticket for using my cellphone, do I have to make a trip then to the Lake Forest Court and the Waukegan Court, or am I sent to one court?
You may actually have to go to both, depending on what the nature of the violations are. And I always have difficulty recalling, chief, what the breakpoint is as to when it goes to Waukegan versus what is in our adjudication as far as certain types of moving violations. But I know that there is a breakpoint that makes it go to the circuit court.
And if that is the case, and you're going to two courts on one ticket, how exactly does that make it more convenient?
I don't think in that instance it would. Although the officers would be able to write the ticket under the state law for both violations in that instance.
Correct. Alderman, if I could answer, when we have a situation like that, we will write both tickets to circuit court, so they only have to go to one place. But that'll only work if the state has a cellphone violation law.
We've talked this over quite a bit, over a few sessions, and things, this came out of the Legal Committee. I'll move to adopt the second option, which is the hands-free ordinance.
Can we have more discussion?
Yeah, can we?
Can we have a second? We can discuss this.
I'll second it, but with the caveat that I'd like some more discussion.
Sure.
And I'd like to make a comment, and it is, I mean, we're talking about revenue, we're talking about being procedurally encumbered. My motivation has nothing to do with whether we generate revenue or we're encumbered having to go to one jurisdiction or another. You can't place a dollar value on the loss of a life or someone being permanently disabled for the balance of their life. And I suspect I'm in a minority sitting up here. I know I'm in a minority because I polled my wife's real estate office, and all those realtors are not in favor. They said, let the state handle it. But, and I have to vote my heart, and we're talking about the health, safety, and welfare of our constituents, and whether the police enforce it and generate ticket dollar number one, or they don't enforce it, just by having it on the books is going to be a deterrent and potentially save a life or preclude a permanent disability of somebody. So I'm still in favor of it.
You know, that's, that's a very well-put argument, and I understand the arguments in favor of this ordinance, and they're good arguments. They really are, and they're sound arguments. But what I keep coming back to here, and what I can't quite get over, is that we're taking everyday, normal, acceptable behavior, things that we do every day, something we all do every day, talking on a cellphone, even if you look at one of these ordinances that I know we're not discussing now, you know, eating a cheeseburger. And we're making it not acceptable. We're doing more than that. We're making it criminal. We're punishing it. And, you know, the ordinance reads, "Driving under the influence, reckless driving, and distracted driving." Well, it's, to me, it's not the same thing. I can't equate distracted driving, talking on a cellphone, with driving under the influence. I understand this is kind of a popular bandwagon to jump on right now. It's kind of an issue du jour, but we're passing a law that's going to govern something that people do every day, and it seems a little bit too intrusive to me, and it's a little bit Big Brother-ish. And I'm not sure, I don't think it's what the people of Lake Forest want. I don't think that they want more government involvement in their lives, and maybe I'm wrong about that. But I don't think it's just the realtors. I think it's not what people want, and I don't know that it's the best use of our police force's time and their resources, and we have an outstanding police force, really, really top-notch. They do a great job. And, you know, again, I understand the arguments in favor of this. They're good arguments. I get it. The fewer distractions while driving, the better. Yes, I understand. If it makes us safer, even just a tiny bit safer, that's a good thing. Yes, it is. And I understand that generating revenue is good. We're all for that, right? We want more revenue. But is it really necessary to intrude that much on people's lives? That's what I just can't quite, quite make that leap, and that's why I can't support it. And I see the logic, if the state decides to pass this law, and they very well could, then I see the logic of us passing our own ordinance. Because for me, at that point, it simply comes down to a matter of choices and a matter of revenue and a matter of perhaps who gets the revenue, and quite frankly, why shouldn't we have that option? And I think that it would be a good thing for us to do that if the state chooses to pass the law, but at this time, especially since the state is considering it, what's a rush? I mean, why would we pass our own ordinance and have them pass something that's different three months from now? I just, is worthy, as much as I understand the other position, I can't support it.
I call for a question.
Well, the only comment I would make is that we're talking about a first reading, so this is not a, this is not a vote on a final approval. This could be, wherever you want to vote, it could be passed as a first reading and sit here until we find out what the state does, and then we could make changes to it in the future. So that's, just again, this is a first reading only.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask? I'm going to put the chief on the spot just a bit. If you were to guess what percentage of accidents in our community are the result of or reason or directly attributed to distracted driving? Could you take a guess?
You're putting me out on a limb here.
I told you, I was going to do that.
Well, I think that the national average is somewhere between 40 and 50 percent. So I think we probably follow the national average.
So almost half?
Correct.
That's a lot.
And what's the definition of that? Is that drinking and cell phones and everything? Or what is it? Beating and talking to your kid in the backseat.
Alderman, anything other than driving, anything that would take your attention away from driving.
Does that include drunk driving?
I don't believe it includes drunk driving, because that's a separate category.
Okay. So hypothetical scenario, mom is trying to find her kid who just got out of school at St. Mary's or something like that, and is driving into the parking lot and going three miles an hour, and, you know, the kid calls her, and she reaches for the cellphone knowing that she's trying to find her kid in a big crowd, and bumps into the person in front of her. Person gets out in front and says, I want you to give that, I'm calling the police, I want you to give him her ticket. I mean, she would be now, instead of potentially just having a ticket for a fender bender, she'd also be getting a ticket for being on her cellphone, and I don't know what the penalties would be, but also she would, I mean, so she had the presumption, maybe she tapped on her brakes instead, and the person hit her from behind. So all of a sudden now, instead of not being at fault, she is at fault, right? Am I interpreting that correctly?
Essentially, yes.
Okay. I guess I go with Kathy on this. I think this is, I think this is something that we're going to know soon. Why would we do this twice? You know, why would we do it now and then have to redo it again? And if they don't do anything at the state level, I think there may be some merit to this being discussed later, but it seems, it just seems like we're going to write it, we know that we're going to have to modify this shortly. And if it doesn't happen, that the state does something, then we can do it when we find that out. I don't know why you think we'd have to modify it. We write our own ordinance.
I guess the other question is, when will we know the state hasn't done something?
Maybe we should have a time limit.
We could revisit August 3.
But it seems that it's being actively considered, so...
Well, I've been hit, I've been hit by somebody who is on a cellphone, so I have kind of a personal stake in this. And I think it is a matter of safety. And you can put the most innocuous example of somebody who's just crawling along and on their cellphone, but that's not the reality of what happens. My daughter-in-law was almost, had a head-on with some person who was talking on the cellphone and went across the line on Waukegan Road. It's a serious matter. I mean, it's not a matter of personal convenience, it's a matter of safety.
And if I can just also add, we, there are existing ordinances precluding the use of a cellphone in the schools, in the schoolyard. Think about the enabling legislation and what the underlying rationale was, and what really was the heart of the matter that caused that legislation to be passed. So distracted moms wouldn't be driving over kids and getting dropped off at school. And you can extrapolate that out on our roads. It happens every day. You know, you can press the button on your radio to change the station, and you're turning away for half a second or one second to look over at your radio dial, change a button. You pick up that phone to dial a number. I mean, there's a potential loss of life going to happen in all the time it takes to dial those 10 digits. You're on Bluetooth hands-free, it takes you that half a second to answer the phone. If you've got voice-activated dialing, you never take your eyes off the road. The whole issue to me is taking your eyes off the road for all the time it takes to dial the phone.
But there's a million things we take our eyes off the road for. I mean, you know, screaming at your kids in the backseat.
Well, some of us are better than others at doing that.
You know, filling with the radio.
And in Bob's example, the person obviously caused a problem by crossing over the yellow line. I mean, they were in trouble regardless of what caused them to do that.
We're legislating behavior, everyday behavior.
I need to disagree a little bit with that, though, because I don't know anybody, I drive with the picks of a phone anymore. I mean, I see them go by my house in the morning, but everyone in my family, all my friends have hands-free because they know it's the responsible thing to do. And I think the holdouts should be subject to this rule. It's a matter of...
I think eventually technology will catch up with us.
I think it's here, and if you're not doing it, you shouldn't be picking up the phone.
I think eventually all cars will be equipped with Bluetooth capability. Older cars don't have that option.
It's $50.
Yeah, it's a $50, $30, $50 attachment.
But, I mean, I think eventually it will happen. I...
After we lose how many lives? We didn't want to wear seat belts either, Kathy.
You know, and you know what? I run every morning with headphones on, you know, down by the lakefront or on the bike path or on the street. Is that safe? No, probably not. Should I be fined for it?
You're not jeopardizing the rest of us when you do that.
You know, it's...
I think, well, it's true, it's regulating personal behavior, but it's regulating personal behavior that affects your fellow citizens in a dangerous way.
And just playing devil's advocate, though, assuming, and I think it's unfair to say to the other council members that our main drive is for safety, certainly all our concerns are for safety, but if we're going to look at this issue, why would we want to narrow the issue then to cell phones? Why wouldn't we want to do it to all potential distractions while driving? Why wouldn't we want to have a more expansive ordinance, based on the logic? Be it food, be it other activities carried down in a car, why would we say it's only cell phones? Why wouldn't we say it's drinking a soda, eating a hamburger, putting makeup on? Why wouldn't all those things somehow affect the safety of our citizens? I lose the logic there.
I think they do, and I think the answer is the perfect is the enemy of the good. We know we can get something done with this, which is, it's a recent problem, and apparently it's a widespread problem, that goes well beyond what we've seen before with people eating cheeseburgers or putting on makeup or doing other things. That would, I think, be ideal, but I'm not sure it's ever doable. And if we can affect something that is meaningful for safety, it shouldn't be an argument that, oh, well, gee, we didn't do everything, we didn't do perfect. In fact, we'll be doing a lot of good if we do this, and we can always reassess it if we think at some point it's feasible to start regulating other things while you're driving.
Okay. I just want to remind you that we have a, we have a motion for Alderman Palmer, and we have a second, and it's not on eating cheeseburgers, so. But I would like to bring it to a vote if we can.
That'd be a good idea. It sounds like we're not quite in agreement here, and I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. I really, I feel sympathetic that, I feel, I've heard, I've got a lot of phone calls from people that feel that this is too much invasion into their lives, like Kathy has suggested, but I've also gotten equal number of phone calls from people that are very concerned with this kind of driving. The suggestion that's made here seems to try and come...
and come up with something in between here, where we pass first reading, we put off the effective date, let's see what the state law says, and then revisit it. Is that not a reasonable way to go at it? If there is a state law, we're going to have to comply anyway.
Let's not the motion, right?
No, I know it isn't. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to make.
You know what I'm going to do next, and that's move for final approval. But the first.
Okay, well, I'm trying to offer something that is.
One can pass and one can't. But the fact is, I think it is urgent. Do you want to do this by up and down?
Well, we have a, we have a voice vote here.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to do a roll call since this is?
We can do a roll call vote if you want to call.
But it's for first reading only.
This is for first reading only.
Could we repeat the motion that's actually on the table to avoid confusion?
Go ahead.
It's to adopt ordinance, the option two on the agenda regarding the use of hands-free devices. In other words, if you're using a hands-free device, it's okay. If you're using a phone without a hands-free device, it's a violation of the ordinance.
Can we take a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Novit?
No.
Alderman Waldeck?
No.
Alderman Moore?
Yes.
Alderman Pandalian?
No.
Alderman Marsh?
No.
Alderman Schoenhyder?
Yes.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Four and four, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, you have the opportunity, but not the requirement to vote.
You don't have to vote.
Well, my opportunity would be I would vote for the, for this ordinance. And I, my, I'm expanding on it. But I would wait for the state to pass something before we did anything on a final approval. So that's my, that would be my vote if needed.
That's not the motion.
It is a vote, it is a vote in favor of the, of the hands, first reading for hands-free ordinance.
I move for final approval.
Second.
Take a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit?
No.
Alderman Waldeck?
No.
Alderman Moore?
Yes.
Alderman Pandalian?
No.
Alderman Marsh?
No.
Alderman Schoenhyder?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
I would say no. I would like to wait for the state to come back with their final recommendation and see if we can mirror that and see how we could craft our own language if need be.
It's four ayes, five nays, motion fails.
Okay. Thank you, Bertie. Our next item is new business. And we have a Open Meetings Act training update presented by Victor Philippini, City Attorney. Vic.
Tonight, we're going to be talking primarily about the Open Meetings Act and what I'd often refer to as Sunshine Laws. We will talk a little bit about FOIA, insofar as it affects you as council members. First, it's important to note that as of January 1, there are new training requirements that apply to any member of a public body. That would be all of the aldermen, as well as our members of plan commissions, zoning board of appeals, and all of our other subsidiary bodies. As all of you have been in office since before January 1 of this year, you have until December 31 to complete it. For anyone who is appointed after December 1, I'm sorry, after January 1, they would have a three-month period after their appointment to, or election, to complete the training. I think this is a, you'll see that there is a website access for the training. If you do it, it takes about an hour. Probably can do it in less, but, you know, it's about an hour's worth of time. I would note that, to the extent someone is going to be completing their term before the end of the year, there might not be any reason for you to complete the training. Don't know who that would be, Alderman Marsh, but I just thought I would mention that. The Open Meetings Act in general terms, these are things that you've heard before, is statutorily established. And the purpose is to ensure that the actions of public bodies be taken openly and that the deliberations be conducted openly. It applies to all public bodies. And for us, it's not just the city council, but all of our subsidiary bodies. It's important to note that not every group that might get together in the city and that we might even give a name to is necessarily a public body. For example, at the staff level, there's an executive staff group that meets with regularity, but they are not considered a public body. The standard is really going to be based chiefly on whether the council establishes it. There's also a number of other standards that courts have looked at. But that's really the first point that will be a clue as to whether something is, in fact, a public body subject to the Open Meetings Act. The basic language, and really what's the core of all of the Open Meetings Act and when it applies, is when there's a gathering of a majority of a quorum for the purpose of discussing public business. There's actually three major elements there, which I'll go through quickly. A gathering. What is a gathering? We all think we know, but we don't always. It can either be physical, it can be electronic. And email exchanges, well, I'll talk about this a little bit more in the course of this, but email exchanges could become a gathering. That's not quite how we often think of it, but under the Open Meetings Act, that's how it's treated. A majority of a quorum, a quorum is one-half of a body's membership plus one. For the city council, your quorum is five. A majority of your quorum is three. That means your magic number is two. No more than two of you should ever be gathering in the manner that's recognized under the act. And finally, I should also add one other thing. To the extent that we have committees, if a majority of the committee is together, a committee might be of a smaller size, and therefore, that number might change. Fortunately, the statute was recently changed, so a group of five, they still say a majority of a quorum is three. That doesn't work math-wise, but it works legislatively. And then, as far as public business, if you get together and you're there for a social occasion, or if you're there for political matters, all that is fine. If it is regarding any public discussion of issues, however, that's when it crosses the line. And even if you start socially, if you drift into public business, that's when you better make sure that you're keeping the magic number of two in mind. In terms of notice and location, these are two elements of the Open Meetings Act. And I should say, if you have questions along the way, feel free to ask. I may ignore you, but I will still try to recognize that you've asked the questions. Notice and location are the two touchstones of this. With us, we have regular meetings, and they are annually adopted. You know that you do that every, I think we usually do that in December. And then they are posted on our website and otherwise. They are also posted for each meeting at least forty-eight hours in advance. Special meetings can be called within as little as forty-eight hours in advance, so long as the agenda is published along with the notice. Emergency meetings follow the same publication requirement with the agenda, but the time period is much shorter in that it's whatever time is available to provide that notice. In all instances, the locations of meetings are to be in times and places convenient and open to the public. As far as actions that can occur at an open meeting, you can consider items that are not specifically included in an agenda. And when it says consider, that's discussion and deliberation. That's fine. But in terms of taking final action, it has to actually appear on the agenda to take any kind of final action. If you fail to have it on the agenda and attempt to take final action, that action could be voided because it wasn't given proper notice as an item on the agenda. One of the things that has recently come up is the unintentional gatherings. And really, that's something that has become far more troublesome in the electronic age, as we've found a lot more things happen. The contemporaneous communications between a majority of the quorum discussing public business is something that can occur by telephone, by email. Instant messaging is another common opportunity, as well as other social media. I know you've heard this from me before. But if ever you get an email, never press reply to all. That's a basic rule. I'm going to say that always. And, you know, again, be mindful that, you know, when communications occur, and I know that the staff has tried to encourage this as well, and help avoid the awful reply to all. You will often get things as a BCC recipient as opposed to an actual recipient, because then you are prevented from replying to all. It's not intended to, in otherwise, make you feel bad that you weren't a real recipient just to BCC. It's really a protection. Closed sessions, this is something that the Open Meetings Act does permit. And the purpose is really that not everything is appropriate for public discussion. There's a protocol that you're all familiar with. When going into closed session, there has to be a motion. The motion has to state the grounds for which the closed session is going to occur. There has to be a second, and then the roll call vote. Simple majority is required. And then upon entering the executive session, as you know, there are other certain protocols, and they include that we are going to be taking a role in identifying all those present. There's also going to be a recordation of that meeting. Ultimately, there are minutes to be required. And then, when those minutes are approved and eighteen months have passed, then the recordings can be eliminated. In terms of grounds for closed session, while there are, I believe, twenty-seven in the act, most of them aren't going to be very often applied, especially in the types of activities that the council is undertaking or any of our subsidiary bodies. Places where they do occur is obviously with respect to litigation, personnel matters, collective bargaining negotiations, if there's a purchase or lease of property, or setting the price for the sale of property, appointments of officials, and also review of closed session minutes. Those are probably the areas that will most commonly draw you into an executive session. Now, there are occasions, and I believe, I know that Alderman Widman was one person who had utilized this in times past. But we do have a means for attending when you're not there personally. It requires a number of things. First, there has to actually be a physical presence of a quorum of the city council. Second, and we actually have a policy in place, you have to meet one of the criteria that are recognized by statute to participate remotely. And that would either be based on personal illness or disability, being unavailable to attend because of employment purposes, or you're out of town because of business for the city itself, or there's some other family or other emergency. We have adopted a policy as to how this is done. There's a form that's to be completed if ever you run into a situation where, for any reason that's identified, you're not able to attend physically, you can still participate telephonically or by internet, provided that we follow the Last year, you may recall that the city established a new set of policies and procedures for the opportunity to address public officials. The statute, as it was amended, provides that any person shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under rules established and recorded by the public body. We did adopt those last year. As you recall, they provide for a general opportunity, and we have it on our agenda. In fact, we've had it on our agenda long before this law was in place. But an opportunity for the public to speak. We also provide in that policy that if something is going to be an item on the agenda and is going to be afforded, and a person is going to be afforded the opportunity to comment at that time, they don't need to speak during the general non-agenda portion for public comment. To the extent that there's ever an occasion where a matter on the agenda is not going to have a set aside time for public comment, that usually should be announced in advance. And that will give the people an opportunity to address that during the general public comment time. Minutes, yes, we have to have minutes. And yes, you know, you have them and you approve them on a regular basis. The statute was recently changed to establish tighter timeframes for approving minutes. It had been thirty days, now it's down to ten days. I'm sorry, it had been ten days, now it's down to seven days, or the next meeting. So, I'm still saying that wrong. We did not have a timeframe for approving minutes before. It's now thirty. We used to have a timeframe of ten days to make them available to the public. Now it's seven. And the reason for that is just to keep public records current and to make them available promptly to the public. And again, for those bodies, mostly our subsidiary bodies more so than the council, that doesn't meet with regularity, it's their next regular meeting if they don't have a meeting within the thirty-day period. I know that we've had times, for example, when the zoning board has not had a matter come before for several months. So their minutes will be deferred till that next meeting. There is a new notice requirement that has come upon us as of January 1 of this year, and that relates to total compensation packages that are to be avail, or to be paid to various employees. And there are two thresholds. One are for those employees that are paid total compensation package of more than seventy-five but under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For those employees, after the city council approves the budget, within six business days, we have to identify those employees and their total compensation package. For any employee with a total compensation package of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more, there are two notices. One, at least six days before the package is actually considered, and one, six business days after it's actually approved. Insofar as what is the total compensation package, the statute is specific as to that, although specific doesn't mean clear. And what the total compensation package is, are payments by the public body to the employee of salary, health insurance, housing allowance, vehicle allowance, clothing allowance, bonuses, loans, and vacation and sick leave granted. Couple of points I'll note on that. Oftentimes, and this is primarily the case in the city of Lake Forest, the city does not pay employees directly for health insurance. Rather, we pay a healthcare provider, and that is then made as a benefit to the, to the employees. That does not fall within the realm of total compensation package under the statute. And oddly, although the statute references the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund as one of the thresholds for when you have to do this, it doesn't include pension benefits. So that's one of the wonders of the General Assembly and this new law.
A question on that.
Yes.
Are those numbers, the hundred and fifty, whatever, the seventy-five and one fifty, and then the one fifty and above, are those numbers indexed?
They are not by the statute.
So over the next ten years, we can assume that pretty much everybody's going to be on this list?
Correct. And there are easy ways of compliance. You can simply list everybody. The places where it gets as a potential problem is if somebody is on the cusp and there may be some unknowns. Just to share with you a couple of the headaches that's involved. Bonuses. If we have a programmed bonus, such as a longevity bonus, that's easy enough to factor in when making these determinations as to who's over and under these various thresholds. Where we have discretionary bonuses, where someone doesn't have that bonus yet earned, whether that should be calculated or not is an unclear point. The other thing is, is that the statute, although stated as if it were prospective, because it's based on the approval of a next budget, it doesn't specifically say it's prospective. It also doesn't include overtime. And, you know, certainly, when we have years of heavy snowfall, the overtime can be a significant contribution to the overall compensation of an employee. That has not likely been the case so much this year. But certainly, if you go back to last year, that would be a very different outcome. But the statute's got some serious confusion as to that issue. And I think taking the literal approach is probably the best approach, but it may not necessarily address what was intended.
When are we going to talk about that, how we might comply?
I'm sorry?
How, when are we going to schedule the chat about how we might comply?
With respect to the compensation levels?
Yes.
That's something that actually.
During our budget discussions or something?
It's actually something that we've had some initial discussions at the staff level. And it's going to be something that the staff will be making those determinations on what they know. And then, to the extent that. And then to the extent that, and again, really, the more challenging threshold is the 150 and over, because there you have to have the advance, the advance action. But to the extent that we have someone on contract, that's going to be a little easier to figure out, because we know when a contract might be coming up for approval. To the extent we have someone whose compensation is just done by virtue of the budget, you know, I think that we'll probably be working on an abundance of caution, even if someone may be below the threshold but is close, we might want to just identify them in advance before the approval of the budget.
It just seems like a topic that we ought to be more than transparent about.
Yeah.
I would just suggest that we err on the side of, since you've suggested that there's a lot of ambiguity in the legislation, I would err on the side of transparency, and let's just disclose everything that we can possibly think, so as not to be criticized for not disclosing.
And one of the things we've... Yeah, one of the things we've talked about at the staff level is just that, making all of that available, and perhaps identifying some of them as specific for purposes of complying with the Act. But putting the information out there and putting it on our website, and that's the way we would comply, is through the website. Maybe easier both from a compliance and transparency perspective, but also in terms of responding to FOIA requests that might come in as a result of it. You may have seen that the next thing was, what happens if you do wrong? You don't want to do wrong, because as I've sometimes told most of you when I've had the chance, you all will look better in vertical than horizontal pinstripes, and I don't think any of you would look good in an orange jumpsuit. So, either way we look at it, let's try not to violate it, because it's something that does have potential criminal penalties. The other thing that happens is that actions that are taken in violation of the Open Meetings Act can be voided. So, again, it's something that doesn't serve any of the, any of the parties that might be interested in an action of the city council. FOIA is something I'll talk about just very briefly. It's something that's handled primarily at the staff level. It doesn't usually involve you, but there has been a recent attorney general opinion that has raised some questions. And what it had said is that if you receive communications involving public business on your personal devices, it may in fact be subject to FOIA. Now, the circumstances under which that was decided were unusual, because it was at an actual city council meeting. So, if all of you right now were texting away to each other, then at that point, what you're texting would be subject to FOIA under this new attorney general opinion. It's not so clear that that would be the case outside of the meeting context, but I would suggest that you exercise due caution if you are going to be using your personal devices to conduct public business, because it may be subject to FOIA as things are developed going forward. We do have, in the city, a FOIA officer, and as I said, this is mostly a staff responsibility. These are among the things that the FOIA officer must do. Thankfully, none of you have to be terribly concerned about it, and if you have any questions, now would be a good time to ask. And if you have no questions, I have a question of all of you when we're done.
I have a question on the Open Meetings Act, and that is, the focus of that are contemporaneous communications, like between Alderman, Adelman, and myself. I can't bring Alderman Schoenheimer into it, but I could have either a conversation with him, and then later tell Alderman Schoenheimer, here's what Alderman Adelman said. I could do the same by emails, could I not? And you could have a chain of emails where conversations are always between two parties, but they are being forwarded, and so by the end of the chain, the person looking at it has seen what everyone else has said. That...
I think that that actually is potentially flawed, to think in that manner. The fact that there isn't a reply to all, but there's a chain like that, if it's done within a relatively contemporaneous timeframe, I think that's probably going to be coming close to, if not stepping over the line. I would discourage that that be the case. I will note that the contemporaneous aspect is really something that's important insofar as this goes. If there is a series of emails, even if it's one-on-one, they keep getting forward, so it starts to snowball, but it happens within a relatively quick period of time, say, within a two-hour timeframe, I would think that you're not where you want to be for purposes of the Open Meetings Act. If that same series of emails occurred over a 10-day period with, you know, an appropriate spacing among them, I don't think you have the contemporaneous aspect, and it takes the sting away from the Open Meetings Act. And this actually came about in part from some conversations that our office had with the Attorney General's office, because before all of the electronic communications became relatively available, there was always the possibility of exchanging letters, or exchanging memoranda or whatever, and that would happen over time. It's just all gotten accelerated. So, the question was, where does the transition go from what might be people sitting in a room talking versus people exchanging letters back and forth? And that's where the language of contemporaneousness got factored into the statute. Now, they don't define what contemporaneous is. I think that there's probably a reasonableness standard, but it hasn't been fleshed out by the courts. There have been some decisions, one in Oregon that I'm aware of, and one, I believe, in Arizona, where I know one used a two-hour timeframe, one used a 24-hour timeframe. Neither of those are binding in Illinois. Both of those are things that should be considered. The one that had the 24-hour did not use the word contemporaneous, but it did, in the statute didn't, but it did in the discussion by the court, talk about timeliness. So, it's still great, but I would avoid having the, what I'll call, the snowball forwarding of emails.
What about, oh, I'm sorry, what about Alderman Palmer's example about the telephone? I can understand the forwarding emails, because that would be very easy to trace. But what if he did it the old-fashioned way?
The old-fashioned way is...
I always do things the old-fashioned way. I'm an old-fashioned guy.
And he called Alderman Adelman, and they, and then perhaps later down the line, he picked up the phone again, and he spoke to Alderman Schoenheimer.
Perfectly fine.
There's no violation.
And I can say, when I'm talking to Alderman Schoenheimer, here's what Alderman Adelman told me.
That was my next question.
There is, there's no limitation from serial calling, even if it's one after the next, so long as in none of those conversations, more than two council members are involved.
So, we should all join Alderman Palmer's example and do things the old-fashioned way?
Right, but if you do that, just be careful if you're in the car.
Now, what about...
Be careful. Any other questions?
What about the hub-and-spoke idea that the village manager is allowed to email all of us?
And that is an approach which is perfectly legitimate under the Open Meetings Act, and that's the reason why that's the means for trying to get some relatively quick feedback on matters, and still avoid any kind of violation of the Open Meetings Act.
So, I can email Bob Kylie and say, will you ask the other Alderman what they think about this? He can fire out an email to everyone. Alderman Palmer would like to know what you all think about this.
Right.
They would each reply directly to him.
And then he can synthesize that and communicate that to all of you without violating the Act.
Here's what everyone said.
That is correct.
You have a four-to-four vote.
Yeah.
Who are the five people in that?
Yes, that was my question to you, but I'll actually not, I will defer answering that and let anyone want to answer that.
It looks like the monkeys.
No, no, no. It's the question mark and the mysterians, which is why it's under questions.
Okay, there you go.
96 tears, in case you're trying to remember who on, who on earth were those folks?
Too many tears.
Okay, unless there's any other questions, I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you, Vic.
Just disclose it all.
Any other additional items for discussion this evening?
We're debating question mark and the mysterians.
We're digressing. Any additional items?
Move to a drink.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
I thought it could be day five.